All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everybody to the January 16th, 2020, East Central Independent School District Board of Trustees Meeting. Mr. Toscano?
Yes, sir.
Oh, wait a minute, I forgot something. Let the record show that we have a quorum, so gotta do that official business first. Sorry about that.[22.34][22.34](laughter)
Well, we got a lot of energy in the room, for sure, and it's very evident that the Sinclair Mustangs are in the house.[31.75][31.75](applause) Everybody get ready, huh, Ms. Johnson?[41.32][41.32](laughter) Prayer or pledge? Plus more.
Good evening, Mr. Toscano, President Massengill, members of the board. It's my honor to come before you today and present just a few of our exceptional students. I threw that in there for you, Mr. Bryant. Tonight, I brought a ton of exceptional parents and students with me, but we have two first grade students, Victoria Maguianas and John Prosser, and two third grade students, Gavin Quintero and Melanie Montoya, and I'm gonna throw Chloe in as well, Saldana. They're gonna say the pledges for you. And I have brought Ms. Reyna Jimenez, my fellow Red Raider, who is gonna say the prayer, so I will let them start off.[85.11][85.11](music)
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.[125.64][125.64](laughter)
In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Dear Lord, we thank you today for all your blessings, for the successful outcomes of our school events, and for all our students, parents, and staff members. We ask that you bless them, and we continue to seek your wisdom, guidance, courage, and strength. Be with our board in their deliberations and help them in the decisions they will make for the good of all those who have placed their trust and confidence in their leadership. Grant us the humility to always seek your will in all that we do and say. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.[175.06][175.06](applause)
I told you, I brought some exceptional students with me. So, I would like to recognize all the parents that are out here. If you guys would stand up, thank you so much for allowing us to be a part of your kids' I would also like to thank all of my staff members that have came out and helped out, so if you guys will stand up.[407.01][407.01](applause) So, I asked some of our staff members, because I feel it's really important that you guys see something from kids, so I asked all of them to make a token of appreciation for you guys, and it could be anything that they wanted, and they way outperformed whatever I even imagined. So, each of you are gonna get a gift from the staff member and one of their students that they created without any guidance from me, I'm not creative, so they're gonna bring it up here in a minute, but we wanna thank you for allowing us to showcase our exceptional kids and the awesomeness of Sinclair elementary. So, at this time, our kids will bring up gifts to you, so thank you, guys.[454.62][454.62](applause)[455.62][455.62](music)
Thank you so much.[457.62][457.62](laughter)
That's nice.
Thank you.
Just remind them, just hang with us just a few minutes, and then we'll take a recess and let you go again.[470.12][470.12](music)
Excuse me, just like to say, thank you all, the...
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Johnson, those kids are fantastic, wonderful. I'd like to thank all the parents for bringing them and making sure they came tonight, and it's beautiful, just, it's wonderful, just enjoy it every time we get to do this, so I appreciate that, and just bear for a few minutes, we're gonna go through awards and recognitions, then we'll have a short intermission and brief, and then we'll, y'all can get back to doing schoolwork and grading and all that good stuff, so anyway, just bear with us for a little bit, and we'll, we'll take a short break. So, move on to item three, awards and recognitions. Mr. Toscano?
We have some special folks that we wanna recognize this evening, and for that recognition, I would like to ask Ms. Colas to come up to the podium. Anybody feel like mac and cheese?
Ah, yeah, I do, I do.
Craving mac and cheese?
I'm hungry now, I'm so hungry. Isn't there a pot of mac and cheese y'all brought?[593.16][593.16](laughter)
The new, mac and cheese is the new chicken soup to cure all ills?
That's right, cure it all.[601.16][601.16](laughter)
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Toscano, President Massengill, members of the board, if I could ask y'all to step down...
Uh-oh.
All right.
And just stand right in front of where you sit down here, because January is Board Recognition Month. So, we do, Mr. Toscano was right.[629.16][629.16](applause) We have an amazing group of community members to recognize tonight.
Good job.
Our school board trustees. So, this year's TASB theme for school board recognition was launching the next generation, and I really tried to stay within the theme of the celebration by getting y'all a round trip ticket on SpaceX, you know, around the moon trip, but the PO got denied.[664.63][664.63](laughter) I'm sorry about that, I've tried. As a community, we would like to thank you for devoting your time to supporting public education in East Central. A trustee's job is to set the vision for our education program, to create policies to achieve that vision, to assure that schools are accountable to the community, and to strongly advocate for the outcomes of children and their future. And we want you to know that you truly make a difference for our kids and their trajectory in life. Our trustees are responsible for an annual budget of approximately $175 million. They are responsible for the education of 10,000 students, 1,400 employees across 11 campuses. Their voices represent a community of more than 50,000 citizens and growing every day. Though we make the special effort in January to recognize them, we know that this is a year-long job, it's year-round, they work year-round. They attend evening meetings, school functions, they review reports and agendas and proposals, and they're stuck here late at night with us, couple times a month, doing all of those things. They have to stay abreast of important issues facing public education through their continuing education, which they all do on weekends and in the summer, whenever everybody else is going on vacation, a lot of them are at conferences, right, learning about public ed, so that they can make good decisions for our kids in this district. So, though they face a host of complex issues, they always stick together, and I feel very blessed to work in a district where we have a board of trustees that is together no matter what, they come to an agreement, and they do what's best for kids no matter what. I want you, as a community, to know that, they do what's best for kids every day, and they're very thoughtful about it, and so we applaud their willingness to serve as advocates for children and the voices of the community to ensure our children's education. And tonight, we have an even bigger celebration, okay? This is like a really big deal. For people that don't know, I'm gonna tell ya, it's a really huge, huge deal, and I'm proud to get to be the one standing here today to announce it. I always announce how many years combined y'all have serving on the East Central School Board, and as I added it up Wednesday, I realized that y'all have 100 years between y'all, 100 years of service on the East Central Board.[835.13][835.13](applause) So, it's a big deal. A lot of districts have board members that turn over every three years, okay? Our board members have 100 years of service on this board collectively, and that's something really in our community that we should be really proud of, so if we could give them a really big round of applause, we have some gifts for them.[855.56][855.56](applause)[856.56][856.56](music)
You're gonna come down? Come down!
She's trying to get up from behind.
No, come stand in the picture. Get me that. Mr. Massengill, mind stepping in the middle, or coming over here, one, two. Are you like, oh?[864.56][864.56](music)
Thank y'all so much for everything that y'all do.[872.01][872.01](applause) Are there any family members of our board members here tonight? Do we have any family members? Will you please stand and be recognized?[882.13][882.13](applause) There's a sister.
Sorry, I'm just like a big kid, I have to look.[884.13][884.13](laughter)
Nice.
Very nice. No, you can't have it.[888.13][888.13](laughter) No, ma'am.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the things that y'all do for the district. There's a lot of staff in here, a lot of parents in here, and y'all are what makes up the district, and it's really our privilege to be able to work for you and to support you in the efforts for our children. So, thank you so much for what you do every day for our kids in our district. We appreciate it.[918.19][918.19](applause)
Thank you so much, and for all you guys that, the family members, everything that you do, thanks Sinclair also for what they did tonight. I'd also like to recognize my neighbor, Mrs. Eddie, in the back. She's been...[938.23][938.23](applause) Yeah. I know she's a, she's a big part of the Sinclair faculty, been for years, my kids went through her, and now she has my granddaughter, and she's teaching her how to play the piano. So, I wanna thank her and thank Sinclair, thank all the faculty members for everything you do, thank you so much.
I wanna thank everyone for coming tonight and blessing us with your children and the songs, and your attendance means everything to myself and my fellow board members, and it's a joy, really a joy to serve this district. This community is such a family, all the teachers at every school is such a family, and I would not wanna serve as a trustee anywhere else but EC. Thank y'all so much.[1019.44][1019.44](applause)
Well, I don't know why, it's just one month that we get to celebrate.[1027.13][1027.13](laughter) All the time, and that mac and cheese, I want it in.[1033.13][1033.13](laughter) I love it, I love it, thank y'all so much, we wouldn't be any place else.[1040.13][1040.13](applause)
So, actually, this is my anniversary month, when I got on the board five years ago, I believe. So, when I got on the board, my first meeting was Board Recognition Month, and I thought, man, this is fantastic, this is what it's gonna be like every time you show up, but actually, my thanks goes to y'all, the community, the admin, the students, y'all make it easy to serve and do what we do up here, really, so the thanks goes to this community and to this school and everybody, what y'all do, 'cause, I mean, this is what we do up here for y'all, but really, y'all do it for us as well, I mean, it takes a whole community, and, you know, there's not anything more than I can say, like Mo and Miss Mulkey and Steve and Dell, I just appreciate everything y'all do and y'all support, and y'all are just a blessing, so thank you very much, and everybody keep up the good work.
Yeah.[1105.58][1105.58](applause) And let's not forget, Ashley, I forgot to mention her. Ashley, she's did an outstanding job, and that's your one last one, I didn't mean to begin with, Ashley, but, and for the kind words and of recognition and everything that you did, I really appreciate it, Ashley.
Are you gonna send that PO back in, or like, I'll try.
Not going to the moon.[1133.13][1133.13](laughter) So, we'll take a short...
Well, one more, one more thing really quickly, and then we'll take...
Oh, that's right.
So, we have the proclamation for the 2020 Census School District Partnership, and do I have my Census liaison here? Come on up. She's here just to witness, so 2020 is the US Census year, and it's super important in all communities to make sure that we account for everyone, because that's how they determine for the next 10 years how they're going to distribute funds across the country in different kinds of communities. So, East Central has signed a proclamation that will, that partners us with the 2020 Census, and it means that we agree to allow the Census Bureau to post our organization's name on their website as a partner. We are, have a liaison who's working with us at schools for the 2020 Census, and she'll be educating teachers so that they can educate students and families about the Census. We are gonna be disseminating information, so you can be looking on our website, and we'll have information at all of our campuses about the Census. We will have information at events that we have, we'll invite our liaison to the events and have her there to help families, maybe with some iPads, to be able to go ahead and fill out the Census, and that we will overall support Census takers in their efforts to complete and accurate count in 2020. So, we proclaim these things.[1236.41][1236.41](laughter) Thank you, Mr. Toscano.
You're welcome, thank you, Ms. Colas, thank you.[1244.13][1244.13](applause)
Just real quick, I heard, I was told that PTA is gonna do something after recess, so if y'all wanna stay and watch that and participate in that, y'all more than welcome, but for now, we're gonna take a short, let's go 15 minutes, you wanna go 10, 15?
John, there's also, we have some cupcakes down here, if any of the kiddos are...
Ooh, cupcakes for kids.
Take one as you go, if you're leaving.
Let's reconvene at 7:05, that's a little, about 12 minutes, so let's reconvene at 7:05 for the meeting, and we'll take a short break. All right, let's move on to...
Reconvene.
Reconvene and move on to item four, public comments. We have one speaker tonight, Mary Alice Gomez, speaking of school board recognition. Ms. Gomez?
Mac and cheese.[1303.91][1303.91](laughter)
Good evening, Mr. Massengill, Mr. Toscano, school board members. On behalf of the Heritage Middle School PTA, we would like to take this opportunity during School Board Recognition Month to thank each and every one of you for your dedication and service to the EC community. At Heritage, I have been very blessed with many years of extremely supportive and dedicated parents in our PTA, and this year is no exception. And so, Mrs. Ginger Friesenhahn, this year's PTA president, and the other PTAs across our district got together and wanted to recognize each one of you with a small token of appreciation for the countless hours and 100% pay raise every year, and all of the years that you have sacrificed in your service and support of our students and staff. And that also included Mrs. Colas, Mrs. Burns, Mrs. Hertz, of course, Mrs. Otz, and several others, 'cause we know that you guys spend a lot of time and do everything that you can for us and our kids. And so, my hashtag is actually hashtag exceptional school board, so thank you for everything that you do. So, Mrs. Friesenhahn?
Whoa, wow. Cut boards? Holy mac and oles. Come on now. Mac and cheese, I'm talking about.[1380.11][1380.11](laughter)
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Oh, 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 oh.
Check that out.
Thank you.
Like Christmas all over again, like Christmas all over again. That's cool. Wow.
Nice.
Nice, yeah.
Nice.
Very nice, yes.
Oh, you want us to come down there? Sure.
Nope.
Thank you guys so much, we really appreciate it.[1414.63][1414.63](applause) Did you read the back there?
Yeah.
Oh, gosh. Thank y'all so much. I just wanted to mention that I really didn't realize a lot about PTAs back when my kids were in school. Unfortunately, they had a stigma, you know, oh, they're gonna make us work, or whatever. But with Robyn Truggett, I've learned a lot about the PTAs, had the pleasure of serving as a judge for some of the art contests, you know, it's online and everything, and they sent me this little matrix and stuff, I don't know any of the kids, but I just see the artwork, and it's, and there's stories and all kinds of stuff, so it's been a pleasure that they reached out and asked me that, and then, you know, I just have been seeing a little bit over the last couple of years about PTA, and I just wanna thank all y'all that are here tonight with the PTA, I realize how much you help the community and how much you support the schools and the staff, and it was pointed out to me that Heritage is the first school in ECISD, and Clark is the first high school, only two schools in San Antonio out of a few hundred across this nation, they're recognized as a national recognized PTA.
Yep.
So...
And so, Mrs. Ginger Friesenhahn, this year's PTA president, and the other PTAs across our district got together and wanted to recognize each one of you with a small token of appreciation for the countless hours and 100% pay raise every year and all of the years that you have sacrificed in your service and support of our students and staff. And that also included Mrs. Colas, Ms. Burns, Mrs. Hertz, of course, Mrs. Oz and several others because we know that you guys spend a lot of time and do everything that you can for us and our kids. And so, my hashtag is actually hashtag exceptional school board. So, thank you for everything that you do. So, Mrs. Friesenhahn?
Whoa. Wow. Cut boards? Holy mac and ome. Come on now. Mac and cheese, I'm talking about.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Oh, 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 oh.
Check that out.
Thank you.
Like Christmas all over again. Like Christmas all over again. That's cool. Wow. Nice.
Nice, yeah.
Nice.
Very nice, yes.
Oh, you want us to come down there? Sure.
Nope.
Thank you guys so much. We really appreciate it.
Did you read the back there?
Yeah.
Oh, gosh. Thank y'all so much. I just wanted to mention that I really didn't realize a lot about PTAs back when my kids were in school. Unfortunately, they had a stigma, you know, oh, they're gonna make us work or whatever. But with Robyn Truggett, I've learned a lot about the PTAs. Had the pleasure of serving as a judge for some of the art contests. You know, it's online and everything and they sent me this little matrix and stuff. I don't know any of the kids, but I just see the artwork and it's, and there's stories and all kinds of stuff. So, it's been a pleasure that they reached out and asked me that. And then, you know, I just have been seeing a little bit over the last couple of years about PTA and I just wanna thank all y'all that are here tonight with the PTA. I realize how much you help the community and how much you support the schools and the staff. And it was pointed out to me that Heritage is the first school in ECISD and Clark is the first high school, only two schools in San Antonio out of a few hundred across this nation. They're recognized as a national recognized PTA. So, Mayor Nierenberg was gonna recognize them. He hasn't done it yet, but I think it's really great that one of our schools is a nationally recognized PTA. It takes a lot of commitment for that, so. And thank y'all very much for the gifts.
Absolutely.
I thought that was great.
I'm delighted to hear that because I've been on the other side of that when I was actually very involved in the PTA and had been actually president of the council of PTAs. I remember one of the board members' meetings, I presented an apple to the board. That was a long, long time ago. But I'm saying this to say, I can appreciate on the other side of the work that it takes to try to get people together, get a meeting, do all of the things that you do. So, I know that that hasn't stopped. If anything, there's probably more work and more, but to achieve this kind of status is just tremendous.
I agree.
Absolutely.
Congratulations.
Again, just thank y'all very much for everything. You always talk about a house will build and it starts with a foundation. Foundation is the community and these guys up here, I mean, it's fantastic. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
Brilliant. Thank you. With that, we will. Move on to item five, public hearing for Texas Academic Performance Report. Per statute, would anybody, anyone like to comment on the Texas Academic Performance Report? Mr. Superintendent, Mr. Rowland?
Yes, sir. So, the entire report, trustees, as you know, is in your packet on page nine. It runs through page 50. At this time, I'd like to call Jonathan Holbert up to the podium to provide a brief overview for the board.
Mr. Massengill, Mr. Toscano, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to present the taper report to you. We're gonna give it its proper amount of time for the presentation as usual. So, while we have a much more thorough system, that's a community-based accountability system that looks at many facets, this system from the state of Texas, you're gonna notice, is very heavily based on STAR and just that one-time test. And I'll highlight some of the other components of it briefly. So, while I have a few slides to kinda walk you through, I know you have a much more lengthy report there, but I wanted to just pull out some highlights for you. So, on the, we do have, it starts with the ratings that you've previously been familiar with where Texas has moved to that grading system where it's like an A to F system. And we've talked about how in Domain One, there was a score of a 72 on student achievement. It did school progress, closing the gaps, and then it had an overall, an overall score where from 70 to 79 would be a C rating on their scale. Some, some other pieces that are less STAR dependent on it because we know that almost that whole grading system is about STAR. It does look at attendance rate. It looks at enlistment in the military, or you can see that we're ahead of the state on that one. Looks at AP participation. It looks at our career in tech program and the enrollment there and how students are earning, it keeps evolving how they measure that, but it's about earning an industry-based certification. And so, that's, that's one of the changes there. And then it looks at if they're college, career, or military-ready and it breaks it up into different components there. One of the components it looks at beyond STAR is the graduation rate and it does it as a four-year and a five-year. And so, no matter how they measure it, East Central continues to be ahead of the region and the state in helping our students reach that graduation rate, as you can see there. It looks at dropout rate for both seventh and eighth grade and ninth through 12th grade. And then it looks at graduates enrolled in Texas institutions of higher ed and looks at East Central. And it's been very steady between those two years for us. So, kind of a summary of what we're seeing here is a first rating about financial is that we have an A rating which is superior. We are an accredited district. From that first slide, you can see that we had a C overall rating. And it has a little note that says special education determination status. They're saying that needs intervention, which is, in the past years, we've talked about the PBMAS system, the performance-based monitoring and accountability system and how the state is responding to federal requirements and how they have us make a plan. This is a continuation of that. And so, the next agenda item, you'll see they've changed the language of that report to RDA and I'll be talking a little bit about that in the next section. Are there any questions you have about the TAPR?
Move on to item six, superintendent report. Mr. Toscano?
Yes, sir. As Mr. Holbert briefly referenced, RDA, the results-driven accountability report is the evolution, next evolution of the federal PBMAS report. And so, at this time, Mr. Holbert will give the board an overview of that particular report. It is also in your electronic packet, as you know. That begins on page 53 and runs through page 64, if you wanna follow along.
So, again, I'm just gonna give you some highlights for the pages. I think it's about a 12-page report you're looking at there. This is a Texas report, but it's in response to the federal requirements. So, it's, Texas is results-driven accountability, but it's, it's in response to a federal accountability system. As we've said, it's previously known as the performance-based monitoring and accountability system. It looks at the same four areas. They changed the name, but it's still looking at bilingual ESL, the career in technology, ESSA, which is really about our federal, our federal funding through Title I-A and special education. And just like in previous years, they do it as a performance level. So, they give you a score of a zero, one, two, three, or four in each area. And the lower scores are the better ones. You wanna, you wanna see a zero on the scores. So, if we look at the bilingual ESL, you'll notice a lot of that report says report only. And that means that they're telling you where you are, but they didn't rate us this year. And that's because they either have a new metric or they've changed the calculation or they're doing it in some different way. So, of the areas that did get rated, everything was at a zero except for the dropout rate. You'll see that one, I think, had a point and that represented 11 total students that fit that criteria. And so, while the, the number looks like it's getting flagged there, it's a, it's a small number of students that contribute a higher percent, if that makes sense. And so, overall bilingual got a rating of not rated. Everybody in the state got not rated because there were so many report onlys. But because we had so many zeros, I think from what we were rated on, it would have been a very, very low rating and I mean that in a good way. Again, the low scores are positive. The next section is about career in tech. And so, you'll see that the majority of the ratings, again, on the right, the PLs are zero. And so, the area of concern here for career in technology is the special education students within that group. So, they would have to both be in career in technology and be in special education. And so, we're talking about roughly 30 to 60 students for each subject. And then, because English has two subjects, you're doubling that. So, it's roughly 60 to 120 students represented in that group. And as an overall rating, the state gave us a one in that one. So, they're saying you mostly had zeros and there were a couple areas like that, the special education subgroup on the high school and of course, tests that they want us to pay attention to. The third section is the Every Student Succeeds Act or what we usually call ESSA. We sure love our acronyms in education, so I apologize for that. So, really, what are we talking about here? We're talking about Title I Part A, which is saying money we get from the federal government. And so, we're looking at our, so who is that? That's our school-wide title campuses. So, all of our campuses that have students in third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, except for BCLC, are title campuses and so, they're getting money from the government. So, they're represented there. And I'm saying third graders, not kinder first and second grade because they don't have STAR tests and because all of the metrics here are about STAR really. And so, who, who are the students represented at the high school? It would be a student last year that was in like foster care, homeless, or a migrant student that we received money for and then we would've had to spend money servicing them in one of those areas at the high school. And so, that kinda gives you a little context of who we're talking about. And you'll notice, again, there were many that were not reported. And then, so, the question is where are we not at a zero on the ratings? And what we're talking about is graduation rate for those title students that we were talking about that were migrant, homeless, those types of things that were receiving federal money for. And then, within the STAR end, of course, that they take at the high school, the English one and English two scores, that had a rating of a three. And so, overall, the ESSA had a rating of a, of a one. And so, from each of these three programs that presented so far as a rating of a one, they're saying you should pay attention to that, you should be working on that, but there's no, there's no like plan you have to do or anything associated with being at a one. Now, the last area, we know from the previous report, that special education, they are saying pay more attention to. And so, I wanted to zoom in on what are the areas that they, that they flagged for concern? And really, there's three things. There's the STAR test for students in special education in third through eighth grade. There's the STAR test, the end of course, that they take at the high school. And then, they also scored a total discipline removal rate. They're saying that students that are in special education are removed for discipline or for reasons from classroom at a higher rate than other students are. And they're saying we should pay attention to that. And I believe what they're saying is if, if they're being removed, then that can affect performance and that we wanna make sure that we're doing everything we can to help our kids be included and help them, help them achieve. So, overall, the rating was a three in this area. And so, that rating of a three is what triggered the previous report, so to speak. It's the same, the same numbers, basically the same, the same information. And so, they, they ask us to submit a plan like we've done in some prior years for PBMAS. And so, we've, we've put together a team and we're looking at that. But really, we've gone back to our CG plans because if you think about it, we started last spring saying, "Let's look at all the data. Let's look at everything we've got and let's find the best plans for what we think will make the biggest difference." So, you've already seen special education's plans for what they're gonna be doing for the year. We're basically taking that and because we, we used their template, it's gonna translate very well over to what they're now asking us to do. So, they just in late December told us, "Hey, you have to make a plan." And they've given us the template. Well, it matches our template by design. So, we didn't, we didn't know for sure it would because they just told us like December 20th what the template looks like, but it's gonna match. And so, we're basically taking the plans that we've been working on since last spring and transferring it onto their template and then we're gonna submit that. And we'll be bringing that to you next month for board approval. So, are there any questions I can answer about RDA?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm, this is so much data. Hats off to you guys. I don't even know, but did I just hear you say that some of this is because of behavioral issues and not?
Yes, ma'am. Under special education, you'll see the total discipline referral.
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Total discipline referral.
Total, I believe the language is total discipline removal rate. I think it's about three-quarters of the way down the page on special education. I know there's multiple pages for special ed, but.
What, what does it mean here in this, this one line where it says PL zero cut points and then district rate?
Yeah, so, the PLs are those performance levels where you get the zero, one, two, three, four, and then they define the rate for you. So, they define like what's the standard to get to a zero? And then, for, the easiest way to think about it is like on the STAR ones where it's a 100-point scale. So, let's say the target is 70. If you're within 10 points of that, then, then you're, you're a one. And if you're another 10 points within it, you're at a two and another 10 points would be a three. Now, some of them, the math isn't that easy. So, like with, with removal rates, it's not a 10 percentile. It might be a, a different range. So, it's just, you kinda have to look at each metric and understand, they kinda have a calculation for each one and you just kinda have to know their system and work with them, help decode it, make sure that everybody knows what we're looking at.
Okay.
Does that?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Anybody else? Good?
Thank you, Mr. Holbert.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right. Move on to item B, personnel report. Mr. Toscano?
Sir, trustees, this month's report is on page 66 and I do want to point to one area of the report. There are a couple of employees who resigned. It's a short list of resignations. We did have four retirees mid-year, which is pretty average this time of year. But of the short list of resignations, there are two, one of which was a school psychologist and the other was a diagnostician. And later on in the agenda, I'm gonna speak to a service provider, Trinity Education Services, that provides some of the services that a school psychologist or diagnostician would provide. And essentially, what we're seeing in our personnel turnover is reflective of the supply and demand of those, those kinds of employees with those credentials. And I'll explain that a little bit further later. So, I just wanted to point that out so you'd have a point of reference when we got to that action agenda item in a, in a few minutes. Any other information that you would like about anything in the report, as is always the case, please let me know and we'll get you that information.
Mr. Toscano, these teachers that have, that I'm looking at have resigned. So, we have subs in those classes now?
Most of those teachers have been replaced.
Okay.
I'm looking at names here. One is very recent and I believe we do have a sub in that classroom, Yvette. The list this month, I think I can only see one that we have not actually replaced, which happened in the last week. I think the others are, yes, sir.
Good deal.
And I'll verify that and if there's anything inaccurate, I'll let you know. Anything else? Okay.
All right. Item C, upcoming events.
Sir, January, February calendar, a few things that I wanna point out. First of all, just a reminder that school is, for students, is not in session on the 20th. And it's actually not in session for staff as well. They get a day off. We have a special board meeting scheduled on the 21st. It's not on your calendar, so if you wouldn't mind notating a 5:30 start time on the 21st. We'll get the, you wanna do six o'clock? Okay. Margaret, would you note that six o'clock for Tuesday? And we'll get that agenda posted tomorrow.
Six o'clock.
21st, Tuesday, six o'clock. You got that, Ms. Oz?
Yes.
Okay. Also, a couple of things I wanted to call your attention to. One is on the 25th Saturday, another on the 29th. There's a couple of events coming up at the Patterson that may be of interest to you. We have a collaborative musical performance. It's at 3:00 PM on Saturday, the 25th. It's, it's a collaboration between theater choir and band. So, we're pretty excited about that. As well as, we have the San Antonio Symphony of Young People who we're hosting in the Patterson on the 29th Wednesday from 9:30 to 11:30 in the morning. And I know that we have many of our elementary students who are gonna have the opportunity to experience that as well. So, we're pretty excited about that. If, if you have the ability and the interest to come to that event on Wednesday, it's, it's one of the things that we knew would, that would happen if we had such a facility that we would attract performances such as this for our children in our community to enjoy. In February, on the 3rd, we have a student holiday, staff development. On the 17th of February, we have another student holiday, staff development. We have our next regularly scheduled board meeting on the 20th at 6:30. And then, also in your, in your packet, there's a one-page document. It's entitled Visioning Conference 2020. And I wanted you to get that on your calendar in February as well, on the 21st through the 23rd. And I'll be sending out specific itinerary for each day so that you're aware in the event that you're interested. And what this is, is a free conference for trustees. You'll get continuing education credits, but it's, it's part of the Thompson's Executive Leadership Institute that I'm participating in this year. They're hosting this event here in San Antonio and essentially, there are 26 other superintendents from around Texas and a few surrounding states who are part of that cohort with me. And all, all of their trustees are invited to this event. There's a lineup of speakers that are very impressive and the, and the theme of the event is the future. And the theme of the event is the future. And essentially, thinking about what the future is going to look like and what considerations we might be making as a board for the education of our students in our local community, given the context of what we project tomorrow in the future. I had a lot, I've heard a lot of positive feedback about this conference for participants in this Executive Leadership Institute in previous years. I think it's definitely worthy of consideration. And so, it's at the Omni La Manteion Del Rio here in town. And again, I'll follow up with the itinerary for each day. And if you're interested, let me know and I'll make sure that you're signed up. But I definitely wanted to get that on your calendar tonight. Then lastly, don't forget, February 29th is this year's Foundation Gala. And it will be hosted at the Institute of Texan Cultures downtown. For the first time, we, in a long time, we won't be in Florisville. So, I know you know that, but I wanted to remind you of that. And if you have any questions about that or need additional information, I can get that to you. Any questions? Good? Okay.
Move on to item seven, action agenda. A 2021, 2020, 2021 district calendar. Mr. Toscano?
Yes, sir. After visiting with staff across the district, getting feedback from them, as well as site-based committees, our district executive, our education improvement council, we have some recommendations for the board's consideration tonight for our 2020, 2021 school calendar. And Ms. Hertz will point out the things that are different between this year's school calendar and the calendar that you'll be considering tonight.
Good evening, Mr. Toscano, Mr. Maskengale, and members of the board. Yes, so, as Mr. Toscano is saying, we have, the calendar we're presenting is very...
It's on page sixty-nine, if you haven't found it. Page sixty-nine, thank you, sorry.
Okay. So, it is very similar to what we have this year, as far as there's 171 instructional days, 16 professional development days, which include quarterly planning and data days. So, for a total of 187 days in the teacher contract. And it does start the third Monday of August, which is similar to this year. Remember, with the District of Innovation, we are able to start a little earlier. So, all of that is the same. There's just a few slight differences. We did get some feedback that perhaps we should be taking Veterans Day off. So, you'll notice on November 11th, that is a staff and student holiday. And then, we previously, the last three years or so, we have been taking Columbus Day off. And so, what we've done on this calendar, we've made the day off for staff and students be Veterans Day. And then, Columbus Day is just a day off for students. It will be an in-service day. We got a lot of feedback from particularly our elementary teachers that they would like to have a day set aside for parent conferences. So, Columbus Day will be an in-service day, but it would be specifically at least at the elementary level for parent conferences. So, that is a difference in the fall. And then, the spring is very similar to what we have this year. You can see, we have spring break at the same time we do this year. We've got Good Friday, we've got Battle of the Flowers. In May, though, there is not a planning day like there has been the last few years, because we did get some feedback from staff that instead of having the quarter one planning day in May for the following year, they would really rather have it during August when we come back. Because at that point, they have their new staff hired. If they've made any changes in teaching assignments, those have been established. And they just felt like it would be better to wait and do the quarter one planning in August when we get back. So, we ended up not putting an in-service day in May. And then, because of the way the calendar just is going to be falling next year and when the Mondays are in May, Memorial Day isn't until the 31st. So, we actually will end up having students and staff finish before Memorial Day with this one. Yay! So...
Could you comment for a moment on the week of spring break? Why we ended up settling on that week of the eighth?
Yes, because, all right, so, we did send out a survey to district-wide, to all the staff, asking their preference on spring break. At that point in time, Northside had posted their calendar for next year, and it was the week of March 8th. Alamo Colleges, on their calendar, it had said the March 15th week, but it did say tentative. So, we did ask staff what week they would prefer. And the majority did prefer the week of March 15th. However, there were lots of comments that they wanted to make sure we matched up with area districts. Well, since that time, more districts have posted their calendars, including Northeast. And also, Alamo Colleges has posted another calendar where the tentative is not on there anymore, and it's March 8th. And so, in order to be consistent with Northside, Northeast, and Alamo Colleges, then we would need to have the week of spring break on March 8th. So, that is how we settled on that particular week. Many of the other districts have not posted theirs yet. But generally, people follow what Northside, Northeast does. Northside does theirs for two years in a row. So, it's easier to see what their plans are, you know, earlier in advance. Oh, and one more thing. We do have on this calendar graduation at May 29th. That's not confirmed yet, because this is about a month earlier than when we normally get the calendar approved. So, it is possible that that might change. But based on the last several years, that's most likely when it will be. But we did go ahead and put it here on the calendar.
Is this the era July the 3rd?
Well, because July 4th is on a Saturday, so...
So, we have a staff development on July the...
No, it's just a day off for staff. But people that are on contract at that time.
But it says staff development, okay.
Well, it's a staff holiday.
You're talking about, what staff?
The staff that works year-round, the central office staff, the principals, yeah.
I thought you were talking about...
No, it's just...
I didn't think you were going to bring the teachers in there.
No, no, no. It's the people that work all year.
We'll bring the teachers in, then say, okay, you're off today.
Nah, I was saying, it was kind of... You know, that would probably upset me.
Yes, sir, it would, yes, sir.
It is a holiday for the teachers.
Absolutely. That's a good catch. Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
I do. So, in 2021, have you ever had anyone mention that? I had been approached, Easter Sunday is on the 4th? Is that correct?
Yes.
So, a lot of, I've just had people approach me and say that they had an extremely large amount of absences on the Monday after Easter Sunday.
So, we did review, we did review attendance reports to see where we did have some days where we had high absences. One that was very high was the day after Halloween. Well, as it turns out, this coming year, Halloween is on a Saturday. Yay! One that seems to be a concern is, a concern is the Monday after Super Bowl. Well, so, we have a staff development day that day. So, we did go and look at where we had really high absence rate. We looked at Veterans Day, and it was a high day. Although, it was kind of interesting, because the day after Veterans Day was actually a little higher. So, I don't know what that was about, because it was a Tuesday. But we did go and review where we might want to maybe put some in-service days and things like that. And so, the day after Easter was a little higher, but not as high as some of the others.
That's weird, Veterans Day absentee. And then, for graduation, it's on the 29th.
Yes.
And Memorial Day is on the 31st. A lot of people go out of town. I mean, I know it's graduation, I get it. But, you know what I'm trying to say, like...
Yeah, it depends on when we get the Coliseum.
Yeah, so, just to, just to comment on that. So, we subcontract from Northeast ISD, who contracts with the Coliseum, and they give us our assignment, if you will. And they're pretty, they usually accommodate us well.
Yeah.
And, but, you know, we'll see what we can do. I think it's going to be limited to probably then. Or the other challenge is it'd be a week after school let out. And then, that's, we've never done that before.
Yeah.
But we've had opportunities to do that. And we've opted to, soon as school's out, have graduation that weekend. Because then, you gotta, they'll be gone a week or so, and then you gotta round them back up, so... But yeah, that Monday, Memorial Day is interesting and...
Trying to advocate for people that want to go to the beach.
I know, I know you are.
For Memorial Holiday.
You're always of the people, I know.
I just wondered if that was, you know, because I mean, it's never on that day. So, that might be a huge, I mean, I know graduation is a huge thing. And I'm not trying to slight that. I just know that a lot of families vacation because of Memorial Day.
Yeah, they could leave the kid back, let him graduate.
You know, there would be less traffic.
Then they could stream it on their phone on the boat, you know? Because we offer streaming, right?
Yeah.
It's an option, you know?
Yeah, so, I was just, you know...
Yes, ma'am, noted.
And that's actually not set in stone just yet.
Right, you said that, I'm glad that they're still looking at that.
Any other questions?
No, that's it, thank you very much.
All right. Mr. President, I recommend board approval of the 2020, 2021 school calendar as presented.
We have a recommendation from the superintendent to approve the 2021 school calendar as presented. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion from Ms. Priestess, do I have a second?
Ms. Brazil did.
Ms. Brazil?
We did, we did it together, so...
Okay, a second from Ms. Brazil, thank you for the clarification, Ms. Priestess.
You're welcome, sir.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Motion carries. Item B, renewal of independent external auditor agreement. Mr. Toscano?
Trustees per board policy, CFC legal. An independent auditor is to be selected to review the district's financial records annually and report those to the board, as well as the Texas Education Agency, with regard to the financial status or position of the school district. We have utilized Coleman Horton and Company as a school district since 2011, and they've completed eight audits thus far. As far as staff is concerned, they're very professional, very reliable, and provide a very high-quality audit for the board to review and to be submitted to the agency. What you'll also see in this recommendation is that, should the board consider the recommendation and approve it, that the amount that the district would not exceed for this service in 2020 would be $41,000, and 2021 would be $43,000, and in 2022 would be $45,100. And again, those are not to exceed a cost for the service of the independent auditor. I'd be happy to answer any questions the board has regarding Coleman Horton and Company.
Do they ever come in under?
Judy? Do their fees ever come in under? They're pretty precise fellows, aren't they?
They are, all the time.
Looks like they're doing their annual increase every year, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, I recommend board approval of the services from Coleman Horton and Company, LLP, to review the district's fiscal records and report to the board and the Texas Education Agency on the financial status of the school district for the years ending August 31st, 2020, 2021, and 2022.
We have a recommendation from the superintendent to approve the services of Coleman Horton and Company, LLP, to review the district's fiscal records and report to the board and the Texas Education Agency on the financial status of the school district for the years ending August 31st, 2020, 2021, and 2022. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. President, I move to accept the superintendent's recommendation on the renewal of the independent external auditor agreement.
We have a motion from Mr. Steve Bryant, do I have a second?
Second.
Who was that, Dell?
Yes.
I have a second from Dell Brazil.
You're welcome.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Item C, professional services provider, Trinity Educational Services. Mr. Toscano?
Yes, sir. Trustees per CH, board policy, CH local. The board delegate superintendent the authority to make budgeted purchases for goods and services. However, unless the purchase falls under a categorical exemption, any single budgeted purchase of goods or services that costs, that is going to have an accumulated cost or a single cost of $50,000 or more, regardless of whether the goods or services are competitively purchased, shall require board approval before a transaction may take place. Trinity Education Services provides diagnostic services for evaluation of students who we expect may qualify for special needs services. As a result of some, some action that the agency was required to take, as a result of some sanctions that the federal government imposed, suggesting that the agency was under identifying in the state of Texas, or promoting the under identification of special needs students in the state of Texas through their accountability mechanisms, that some things had to change. And so, as a result, we've seen a pendulum shift from what we call RTI, meaning that when students are struggling, you try to do a series of things that you progress monitor, and then you make an adjustment, and you progress monitor, and you make an adjustment to ensure that a student's struggles are not a system or a teaching deficiency before you ever get to a place where you consider evaluating the student. The pendulum is now swung to where you're going to evaluate the student much sooner when they're struggling. And the consequence of that is that the number of evaluations that the district, and all districts in Texas are going to be required to do, is significantly increased. So, we are fully staffed, had been fully staffed at every campus with an LSSP, who can provide evaluation services. We supplemented that in previous years by paying our LSSPs extra money to do some additional evaluations on their own time on the weekend, and that was sufficient. Last year, for the first time, we saw such a significant amount of evaluations required that we had to contract some of those services. The amount we contracted last year was $17,000, which wasn't too surprising. We definitely anticipated more this year. But at the midpoint of the year, we have, we're going to be exceeding $50,000, and we anticipate exceeding $100,000 by year's end. In part, because two of our available evaluators have been recruited to the private sector. The supply and demand that has been created in the market as a result of this shift has made it very opportune for those with that credential. And so, they're finding themselves making, with the earning potential in the private sector, to be a lot more than working for a school district. So, we've lost two, and as a result, we're having to supplement beyond what we projected. And so, to continue providing the evaluations we need with fewer staff to do so, contracting for those services is going to be something that we're going to need to do. And again, it's going to exceed, far exceed $50,000. So, it's going to require board approval going forward. I'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have regarding that.
Just, yeah, kind of a comment, or maybe it's a question too, but in regard to what we were talking about earlier with the special education, will we see an impact with that rating? Will we see an impact through this? Will this even raise us more?
So, yeah, so, one of the things that's interesting, so, just talking percentages, districts per accountability in Texas were dinged, if you will, if you identified more than eight and a half percent of your student population as special education. The national average is closer to 12, between 12 and 13 percent of a population. And so, in e-central ISD, we've always carried around 12 percent, which our position has always been, we're going to make sure kids have what they need, regardless of accountability. In Texas, in the previous accountability system, previous to STAR, students with special needs had the possibility of taking a different assessment and not counting in the accountability system. With STAR, they all count, irregardless of the accountability system. We, I feel historically, have done a really good job of making sure that we evaluated the kids who needed to be evaluated, identified them at the appropriate rate, again, consistent with the national average. I say all that to say that I'm not anticipating a significant increase in the percentage of students in our population that have special needs. But we're definitely going to have to evaluate a lot more, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. President, I recommend board approval to contract with Trinity Education Services for providing specialized services to students of the district as presented.
All right, we have a recommendation from the superintendent to approve the professor's, professional services of Trinity Educational Services, do I hear a motion? A motion from Claudia Barrientos, do I have a second? Second from Steve Bryant. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Uh, before I move on to the consent agenda, what I'd like to do is just get, uh, Ms. Barrientos up to speed, the, the evening started out with a, uh, with Ms. Johnson's Sinclair students singing a wonderful, and we had dinner, mac and cheese, um, and then, uh, we had Ms. Gomez and Ms. Friesenheim with the PTA, uh, present some nice awards, and this one here is there, um. Have I left anybody out, what, um, so? Would you like to say anything to the staff?
I'm very honored, um, to serve on this board, um, we've, I feel very lucky that we can agree to disagree, um, but honestly, I, I really appreciate all the, the gifts, but I thank you guys for what y'all do day in and day out, I takes a special kind of person to do what y'all do, and I'm very blessed to be up here, and I hope and pray that no one runs against me this coming November. Light my candles, I'm gonna go to someone or do something, but I'm very honored and blessed to continue to serve my community, so, thank you very much, and thank you for my lovely gifts, I can't wait to wear them. Is there any mac and cheese pie?
Oh, you should've been here, that, that was, that was very cute, I mean, yeah, that was awesome.
Sorry, I missed it, I just flew in, so.
So. Straight from the airport, that's right.
Item eight, consent agenda, would anybody, would any of the trustees like to pull anything from the consent agenda? Not, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item nine, adjournment, all in favor?
Aye.
We're done.